Do you need, would you like me to make a motion?
Well, I'm waiting for moving to the area. She's got to wait down.
Oh, well geez, alright. Yes, she can.
Okay, yes, we need a motion to sign the warrants.
What can I tell them?
A second?
All in favor? And now we need the warrants.
While-
Needs to be signed and piled, scrubbed all that stuff.
While the warrants going around, a motion to approve the minutes of January nineteen twenty twenty-one as writ.
Second.
All those in favor? And we're just old, so there is no old business.
We can move on to new business whenever you're ready.
Well, I think that's Rachel, are you not?
What, dear?
Aren't you on review?
Oh, yes, yes, I, you know, okay, I can tell you what we've done and you have the whole packet in front of you.
Did you give us a synopsis?
Yeah, for the past, God, it's been a long time, several months, almost a year. I have been part of this municipal budgets and conservation land and how they affect one another. And I'm on it with, you know, some people who really know what they're talking about. And this, this is the beginning of the report. And the, the, many people, Carol, you and I went to the first meeting, it was in Machias. And many people from many communities were upset about how their taxes were being impacted by conservation land and tree growth and various other effects. And so we put together a whole group of people to investigate it. And we were looking for some kind of formula that would make it equal and everybody would be the same and it wasn't going to be all horrible.
Statewide or countywide? I couldn't remember.
We're looking at Washington County.
That's what I thought.
But we are also investigating other towns in the state that would have similar issues such as, oh, I don't know, like Range Street, you know, other places that have water and, and pours. And what I thought was going to take forever research that I didn't want to get part of was seeded by Adam Dagnow, who has this app on his computer that will, you just kick in facts and boom, all of a sudden comes a whole statewide map. And all you need to do is plug in facts and he'll give you a whole scenario of what's going on. So that has cut a lot of the work that we had to do short.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Can he come here?
Oh, God, he is, he's wonderful. I just, it's like I want that toy, you know?
Sounds good.
Anyway, as I said, this will be the beginning, there'll be more. But if you've read this, you'll see that the effect that a lot of the conservation land is more positive than negative, that it brings other businesses into towns. It will generate an uptick in tourism and in people moving into town. Right now, because there's not a longevity study on this, it's hard to say in this town whether it is the conservation lands, i.e. Mr. Butler, or the pandemic. The pandemic has also moved a lot of people into this town. So that will have to be investigated over a period of time. But the way I looked at it when I finished this, that now the onus is on the towns. The towns have got to come up with something to take care of this increased citizenship that's implying ourselves. We will meet again in March. And so this is to be considered.
Well, I'm glad you're going to those meetings, very helpful.
Yeah, mostly, mostly they've been Zoom, so it's been good. And Renee, when I was out for an operation, I asked Renee to take over for me and she liked it so much she stayed. So it's really, it's a good, you know, I hate committees, but this one is well worth the time.
Because you have representatives from conservation and you have, it's not just been the municipal.
Oh, yeah, we have people from the college, Tora Johnson's on it, Natalie Springle is on it, Melissa Lee is there. Dagnow, as I said, and a lot of people from the state. So it's, it's a cross-section of people from various sympathies. So it's a very balanced field.
And so they don't really have any, any solution yet as to how the, I mean, it's, Lubeck has been very hard hit.
They just want three hundred thousand?
That to how we're going to deal with a loss of taxes, even though it may be positive in the long run. In the short run, it seems to be difficult because we have to maintain our roads and all these people use the roads and so does the conservation lands and it's not cheap.
What can, what can end to this? The issue is, the state does not allow the towns to say no to any, anything.
Absolutely, it's a state, yes, it's a state mandate.
And state, like I told Will Toole, the state should bony up some of the lost money to the town.
I agree, I think it's a state advantage. I think conservation land is felt by everyone in the state and it doesn't just bring the tourists.
It benefits everybody.
To Lubeck, it brings tourists, everybody from southern Maine all the way in, they drive all the way up here and everybody's getting a benefit and I think it should be, I think it should be divided amongst the state. I think all the, all the conservation land should be equally, the cost should be equally divided by all Mainers.
Well, and you have to, you have to, there are so many factors, so many components of this, you have to take.
There was an interesting point they made in here that the effect of the conservation lands varies on towns, towns depending upon the potential. Well, and the potential for those lands, there's some towns that the conservation lands aren't affecting anything because nobody else wants to buy those lands, you know, like it depends on the, on the wants in the areas where these things are happening.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, at least from what I read, because I did read it, they are looking at it across the border, around those pieces. Some of those places with industry, the tourist towns, like all those pieces, they don't profess to have an answer to it. They just, they just look at it, they just look at all, they just look at all the issues of it.
It's just nice someone's talking anyway, because this has been a discussion for seven years.
Years, decades.
Right, and I didn't realize that there was different classifications, because like the Butler, they qualify for no taxes, but there's some nonprofits that pay some taxes based on potential low use of lands in, in the towns that they're in or something, so.
And some people have, they do it out of compassion, you know, that they-
In lieu of consciousness.
Yeah, in lieu of taxes, they'll say, if you need something, we'll give it to you. And that's, that's one of those things that's up there in the ozone.
It's kind of a catch-22, because you wouldn't have to go ask every time they want. And like, some of them have been very generous, some of the conservation groups.
You know, at the beginning of this, I, I said to the group, I said, I keep thinking that somewhere along the line there's got to be some kind of formula.
I think the formula sounds really good, there should be a formula. Jason, you had a point.
My point is, with all this going on, we really need somebody from Lubeck to run for Will Toole's spot.
Carol. Oh. I've already been asked.
Is she giving it up?
No, he's termed out, he's termed out.
Oh, 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 oh.
And they re, they redesigned the-
Chairman.
They did. They changed everything, like these sports.
They changed districts.
I don't like that guy, Jerry, let's not talk about him.
There is somebody, oh, actually, Bucky Davis is running, is that true?
Oh, he's from Machias.
Well, you know what, somebody has to manage a nineteen million dollar grant, so if you're going to do that, or I would have run.
That's right.
So there, oh, sure, sure, I love that. Okay, are we done with that conversation?
Pretty much, pretty much, there will be more to come, but not right away.
All right, budget schedule, I think the budget schedule should be in the packets and it's going to be, we usually did it by the select board meeting, but it seemed to be really a lot to think about and then go to a select board meeting. We thought we'd just get it all done in March on all the Tuesdays. And Suzette can't come on Wednesday, so I think it's every Tuesday and fifth in March.
What time are we going with that?
Three o'clock, it's in here, three o'clock, it's like the third to last page.
The California time, or?
It's the second to last page in your, in your campaign.
I would go for four.
You could come to four, yeah, okay, that's fine.
I mean, people, some of them are going to want.
It doesn't go over an hour. If you can, if you can, well, we, we need it to go over an hour, that's the problem. We used to have to stop before and say, okay, it's time to select.
You gotta get through, whatever, change it to four.
Yeah, my boss doesn't let me out of work, she's mean.
Is four okay for you there, Jason?
And let me add, anyone out there, it's the most exciting hour two. It's marked on our counter, every year it's so much fun, please come by and-
It's really fun.
It can be entertaining.
You're all right.
I always slipped, I didn't think I did, but probably did.
So I don't even have to make a motion for that, we're just going to change, change it to four.
Okay.
Every Tuesday at one.
And, you know, try to keep it to an hour, but maybe it'll go over a little, whatever. Okay, what else? All right, so to not go into too much detail with the safe harbor, I will, I did say something at the last meeting which I wasn't able to go ahead with. You're not allowed to discuss the proposer, proposals with any of the proposal, proposer people unless you accept the bid and then you can negotiate. So I was not able to even ask either one of them whether this budget could be reduced for any reason because that's the process procedure. I had a conversation with the Maine DOT and with Senator, Senator Collins' office and we have not talked to the proposers because both, both proposals were over budget. So we technically have to redo, we, we have to reject them, we have to formally reject them. And we have two choices, we can look for more money, but it has to go back out to bid. And, or we can reduce the scope, we can either find, or both, find more money, reduce the scope. All of it has to be approved by the federal, by the MARAB team, which is the maritime, seven people that are on a team for the build grant in Washington. So the selection committee met and they liked the idea of the reduction of scope. It's always better to work with the money you already have than to look for more money. And I did speak to the head of the, the DOT that does the boards, Matt Burns. And money, it can be had, but they always want the town to put their at least twenty percent in. And if you're looking at six million dollars, then you're looking at a million dollars. So I didn't think that that was the most, even if you could get that much. I didn't think that was the best way to go. I thought the best way to go was to figure out if we could achieve a safe harbor and, and get most of what we want. So there will be an informational meeting about what the harbor board decided at six o'clock tonight. But just briefly, it would involve everything we wanted minus, minus the boats at the end of the breakwater and not the road, just the breakwater with a parking lot put in and some year-round floats right by the boat launch. And we were hoping to get that within the nineteen million dollar budget. And I think that there will get, I think we'll get, these two people will re-submit proposals. And I don't think it'll take long because they've already done a lot of studies on it. And I think we have a third person that's interested in making a bid as well.
When you send them your rejection of their proposal, can you do it in a narrative that would allow them to re-propose at a lesser, you know, a lesser thing?
Well, it's going to, when-
The reduction, the reduction of scope.
First, you have to just reject the offer and then you just, you can say, we rejected the offer, it's going to back up the bid. And that's all you can say because until, until the scope of the work has been approved by the MARAB team in Washington, we can't say what it's going to be. And that's why we can't talk directly with it, with, with any of them right now. It all has to be done by the books.
You're going to bid out, bid out those items.
Why are we talking about the time here?
I don't think, while it depends on how fast the federal government wants to approve it, or if they do approve of it. I do know one thing, that the Senator's office definitely does not want the project to, they, or want.
No one does.
Even if it needs more money, but getting more money is, I don't know, I'm going to try, I think this is the best way.
Yeah, I agree, I, I think.
Less maintenance.
Yes.
And hopefully the fishermen that, that do come tonight will agree that I definitely want to count into it. I certainly don't want to sell an idea that not enough people have weighed in on. I, I also don't think anybody wants the money to just be returned to the government.
Yeah.
We, we've only spent three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in that, not purchasing the house and getting consulting and engineering fees. So that, that can be, that can, that can be given back and we can be done, but I don't think that's the way to go.
Yeah, you've invested a ton of time in this and energy and other people are very excited about it. The town's very excited about it and I would hate to see it die.
We'll have to do what we can do about it.
Well, I think, I think it would be greater for the building to twelve hundred and seventy foot breakwater and have a boat launch. Because right now, we don't have a boat launch, they can use and inclement weather at all, no boat launch.
Ten years before this COVID hit and all the prices went crazy.
I know, I know.
That's the difference.
So we'll see, I think that's the first of the choice, we'll see what they say and if they agree, then.
You're on the right side.
As far as the time goes, it shouldn't take, but if they agree, let's say they agree in two weeks.
Yeah.
Should only take four to six weeks to put it back out to bid because two of the three bidders already have done all the work. They just, we have to deduct some of the pricing from the reduction in the scope.
Well, actually, a third bidder did quite a bit of legwork on it too and they just realized that.
Yeah, so maybe we'll get a third bidder then, which would be great. Anyway. Look at, Lubeck Memorial Library is here, I think, for a letter who wants to say.
Yeah, hi, I'm Paul Holm, I'm the vice president of the Board of Press，并 and this is Kate Chan, the president of the Board of Press of the library. And Melissa Lee, who is the librarian at the library, also.
The backbone.
We are currently requesting a letter of support for the building project that is coming up for the last couple of years. Well, in the three years prior to COVID, we were experiencing oftentimes for programming running out of space at the library. And two years ago, we had an anonymous donor make a very generous donation of seed money to finance or, you know, explore the idea of having an addition on the community room. And so we've spent the last two years, we hired an architect to come up with a design very, very conscientiously and deliberately looking at how we can serve the community better in the future. It's not a huge addition, but it more than doubles the existing space. And we've included a lot of flexibility in it, there's going to be a accordion wall that you can close so that you can actually make it in two spaces. There'll be an increase in privacy, both will have like flat-screen TVs where both sides could have meetings. We'll have flexible furniture, so you can set up rooms for a lecture or a classroom. And we, to do this, we have to switch, the main entrance is going to move off Water Street and it's going to be on School Street facing the Beer Gardens, basically. And that will also include an arch entry, so that entrance will be vastly improved and hopefully make access for people unfoot, especially in the south, more clear. It's also going to address some of the icing issues that we have getting in and out of the library. It's going to include a handicap access button. So on that back entrance, you can hit the button and have the doors open in that automatically. But we're really excited about it because what it does is really expand the possibilities for programming at the library and collaboration with all kinds of other service organizations in the area.
How big is the room size today?
Well, the existing is, it's under four hundred square feet and the addition is adding a little more than four hundred square feet. So it's not huge, but with the furnishings we'll have in there, it really is going to make it incredibly flexible. So you could, everything that we've had difficulty having privacy for is going to be resolved with this room and be able to close it off, still have the other room accessible. But, you know, for things like tax preparation or testing, tutoring, where you need more of a private space, it, it should be satisfied by this.
Isn't it wonderful?
Yeah, so we would really appreciate a letter of support because we are actively grant writing at the time and we're hoping to raise all the funds through grants, local donations. And it's a letter from you all that you bear.
They're applying for grants, I'm sorry, I was reading one, are you applying for grants?
Yeah, we're applying for, we've got about, we've got three that we're working on right now and about three or four more that.
Stephen King, I'm sure.
Yeah, that one's down the road, right now I'm working with Lieber Foundation, Davis-Samson Foundation.
Good.
Yeah.
Well, the library's the heartbeat of the town, it really is. And it's, there's so many school kids are in there, it's just a pleasure to see them, really is.
Yeah, well, and it's exciting to think about what will be possible with this, with the new interactive screen that we'll have. You know, we could get classes over from the school and do programs like through the Smithsonian where you can have an interactive program with them, so, yeah, it's really exciting.
Well, you know, as a matter of fact, I am just about ready to do the Camden Conference this year and it is Zooming, you know, because they're not doing it in the open venues. And I kept thinking the library would be perfect, but it's not, uh, big enough.
Yep. So down the road, we're, we're really hoping that we could start, if, if we get all the grant funding that we're hoping for, there is a possibility that we could start the construction phase of it in the spring of twenty twenty-two, so fingers crossed.
That's just a few months, just around the corner.
Before you know it.
So shall we read this letter that we're going to sign? "To whom it may concern from its beginnings in two, in two rooms behind Dr. Robert McBride's office seventy years ago, Lubeck Memorial Library has served the town of Lubeck and our neighboring communities with unwavering commitment. Like many libraries across the state and country, Lubeck Memorial Library is the cornerstone of literacy, arts and humanities, programming and digital services for our town. When Lubeck Memorial Library's new building opened its doors in July of twenty two thousand and one, it included a community room. For twenty years, it has hosted hundreds of events which often exceeded full capacity. To address the need for increased community participation, an architect of local roots designed an addition which more than doubles the community room space, improved street and ADA access and significantly upgrades digital services for our undeserved, for our under-deserved town. The town of Lubeck Select Board wholeheartedly supports the Lubeck Memorial Library community room expansion and digital upgrade. We eagerly anticipate the new collaborations between Lubeck Memorial Library and other local service organizations and the potential, and the potential new educational and training opportunities made possible by this expansion. We enthusiastically urge your support for this project." So that sounds good to me, does that sound good to you guys?
Oh, great. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to vote, to sign this?
I'll make a motion, you can sign it.
You have a second?
Do we, do we want to include anything about the school, opening to the schools to come in there, the kids?
They need this letter right away.
Yeah, that's up to them.
Okay, but there's no library at the school.
Yeah, right, I mean, we, when we are writing the grant proposals, we are definitely total same old.
And, and the kids below the poverty line, I mean, because those things speak.
They do, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Because I think we have to give this to them.
Yeah.
Do we have?
I made a motion, I have a second.
All in favor? Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Well, this is original and I'll make the copy for them.
Thank you for all the hard work.
Really, I know how hard it is, definitely, I sympathize. Other business, other business, any other business?
Can I just have, just have something that came to my mind today and I was talking. So I keep looking back and remembering the sewer report to us, I talked about the sludge being spread on the eleven acres that we own, that we don't own, and, you know, like that piece. So I don't know if anybody heard on the news, but like there's been all kinds of issues with contamination of waters and farm animals and all from places where the sludge has been spread. So it's just been like, I've been thinking about it the last couple of days and I'm like, so I just, I wonder, you know, if our folks are thinking of something different or if they're looking to address it and just as a board, if we could like be cognizant of that fact and wondering what our wastewater treatment plan is thinking about doing with their sludge, because there's probably going to be a mandate that they can't do that anymore is what they implied of what I heard today.
You know, a lot of this, a lot of this.
Well, I certainly hope for five billion dollars, they have addressed the issue of sludge.
A lot of it.
Well, the problem is what they do with it and they're spreading it on farms, there's a farm in like, I forget the name of the place, but this, this couple, they, they did the test on their own because the state is so slow. They had to stop selling their produce, they can't slaughter their animals anymore because of sludge spreading on their property before they bought it.
P F S.
And, right, they're P F S, their water's contaminated, like land around it, that, you know, I just, it's just been on my head lately that.
That, but that's something that Alver?
All Over.
Alver?
All Over.
Alver Consultants.
No, 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 Alver is the people, are the people who, who.
That came and did this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's a very good question for her, I can give you her number.
Back when it all started, they wanted to spread it down on Maple Creek.
Yeah.
That's where our, 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 right?
And the water companies said, no, you're not doing it, way back.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of the sludge, and you, you guys will love this, ends right up down the Maclay, you mix it up and you buy it for growing vegetables.
Oh, yeah, for a lot, absolutely, absolutely.
And that's what you're buying, the sludge from.
Wastewater treatment, absolutely.
So, you know, I don't buy it, by the way.
Well, I think it's just a big, I just know, just, you know, it's something I think as a board we need to have on our ERAs.
Well, I think we're a little ahead of the game on that one, it's okay. Got to get your mind out of the muck and answer.
That's all, that's all crap.
You can get the, her number, oh, actually, I have it in my phone, I can give you the number, the lady that's, that did the study and she, she should be able to answer that right off, right away.
I did see that.
She'll know about that regulation.
Well, I know that, yes.
They have a map where you can look and see where all the permits were issued. I know there is one in Lubeck, I think there were only one in Lubeck. But, yeah, you can.
Where the sludge goes.
Yes.
And some, too.
Gets mixed in, it doesn't stay anywhere. It goes down the timmies and it's in a cement, cement enclosure, it gets mixed with salmon guts and all that stuff. So it is not spread on the field in Lubeck.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It goes down the timmies and it's in a concrete enclosure.
But then, what happens to it?
Then he sells it, he sells it to, I don't know where he sells it, but I see truckloads of it going out.
Right.
This is not reaching into the land.
Right, he sells it.
Well, it is at some point, if that's still what's happening, it's like.
I don't tell you who I see leaving with his.
You're going to find out for us. I am going to find out where the eleven acres of sludge spread on.
Hey, Carol, I don't know what he is.
Eating it to the green crabs.
Yeah, will that kill it or make it bigger?
That's what they were thinking of doing with green crabs, is to put them in one of those dens.
Oh, my goodness, well, any public comment?
I think we've said enough.
We didn't commit to.
Speak for yourself.
We're trying to kill time to six, huh?
Ready, any committees happening at all that, you know?
Well, Shellfish met a couple of times, didn't meet in December, no forum, met in Jan, no, didn't meet in November, no forum, met in December and January, minimal forums. It looks like some land that has been shut for years might open this year because contamination levels are lowering on some of the beaches. Still challenges with access, still a conversation that happens. And like all committees, participation is a challenge, you know, like that, that would be my only comment.
I do have a question, Rachel, about the conference. I did have a question, Rachel, about the comprehensive plan committee.
You know, that's what we should mention that.
What's going on with that?
This comprehensive plan was supposed to have started last year. And Renee and I were talking about getting busy with it, and then we discovered that it's a planning board initiative, really, that they should start.
We talked about that a couple of months ago.
And then Cecil came one night, said, um, I'm going away for a month. And so is Deb, what's her name, for the realistic. So, um, and, and he really thought that we were going to get help with, uh, Washington County Council of Governments, but he's unaware that Judy East is no longer with him, nor is anyone else.
I don't think it's still our best advantage to review our own comprehensive plan for our own needs, and I think we need to review it.
Well, I would, I would like to get started yesterday.
My understanding is that Cecil is back, and that the planning board meeting that is scheduled for next week is supposed to be the topic, that Renee just voted this the other day. So I think it's three o'clock next Tuesday is the planning board, and the comprehensive plan is supposed to be.
The topic of.
But now also, it's a sub, it's a subcommittee of planning boards, so there, there, I, my understanding is there's two people from the planning board.
Correct, because they have decided what two is part of the issue.
The general public, because of like six or seven people. And they're supposed to like, speed it up and like, actually read it, and.
Yes.
Alex Henry, I think, is interested in sitting on the planning, the comprehensive plan committee.
He'd be good at it, too.
I know.
Well, you know, I.
Bring some new thoughts to it.
That's, that's, sure. Let's get started.
Got to get started.
Yeah.
More mine, they call on it.
Counting on, so you, you and Nancy both are on.
Well, I'm not on the committee, because Denise has missed out.
That's right.
But I'm happy to be involved in.
Because why?
Well, because we gave Denise Ruhl my, my spot, because she expressed an interest as a citizen, and we, you know, were encouraging. But I absolutely invested in seeing it happen, and I'd like to see it happen before the town meeting, that it would be approved at this town meeting, because it's, I'm almost done writing the comprehensive plan, which is, you know.
Have the people read it.
And there's a, there's, there's not a whole bunch to change. There's, there's some.
But some changes are vital.
Right, and some of it is, and some of the goals.
So Rachel, who's on the committee?
Cecil Morse.
I know, but there's like seven people.
Okay, Cecil Morse.
Representative from the sideboard.
Deb Holmes. I am on it. Denise Ruhl. And did we have any?
The person, the person who was involved in writing it 10 years ago, his name, I don't remember.
Peter Boy.
Peter Boy, yeah. And, um, and the, the thinking was, because I asked Renee the same question, uh, last week about this, and the thinking was that after the planning board meeting next week, dates could maybe be set that the comprehensive plan committee needs it to have, because we're not even sure that everybody has a current copy, or like, you know, so to get it moving, we have to like, call the meeting, and I was, I was wondering who calls the meeting, is really my point. Is it the planning board, or is it?
That's it. It's the planning board.
It has to be the committee when it's formed, and the chair of that committee. Melissa.
I don't know. Do you need extra people? I didn't hear.
Is that a volunteer?
Absolutely, yeah.
Melissa.
We can expand it, and you and I could get on it, and then it would still be an odd number.
It, it's just, we're hurrying up to get started.
You and Melissa, and we have an odd number again.
And then all of us.
I think that's great, because then if you just say, as long as there's a quorum of five.
Right, and do it.
Then you can have nine, and then, then you're going to get meetings going.
Yeah. We all have been chomping at the bit here, and we're trying to get started.
I can give you a copy of the comprehensive plan right now, before you leave, if you want to read it.
All right.
I have an extra.
So, so I would just encourage, you know, anybody with any interest in planning board meeting next week, so I'll be there. And then from there, hopefully, we'll launch with some dates to.
Maybe I may draw up the.
So Nancy, you said that's next Tuesday.
I believe it's next Tuesday at three. It's on a calendar.
Tuesday calendar. If you're interested in sitting on it, and you haven't been appointed yet.
It's the planning board's meeting, and I think it's next Tuesday at three o'clock.
And then this is kind of a subcommittee.
And they're, well, they're.
And it's going to have other people besides the planning board.
According to the charter, they're the responsible committee, but they are our committee, you know what I mean? The board's responsible for all committees in the big picture of things, so.
Yeah. We just wanted them to get started.
We're working on that. We haven't used the gabber yet. So, I'll maintain a motion to adjourn.
I would so moved that we would adjourn this delightful meal.
Quickly say.
Did you have your hand up?
I may, I may have.
Yeah, there's pointers for you.
You may have your badge. Could you say, well, it seems, I'm only sitting over there as well. I'd like to thank our.
Yes.
Town crew.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They may not be done yet.
Good job.
Certainly done. Yeah, yeah, let's, let's hope this forecast in the next couple of days is a miss.
Yeah, let's hope it's a miss.
Well, it's all about the temperature, right?
I saw Ricky, uh, the other day downtown, and I'm like, you look about three quarters eyes shut, you going home? And he's like, I keep going, I gotta go home. So, uh, great work there, and then this well last meeting. I think I had sent out thoughts and prayers that the town's had some.
Yes.
Unfortunate events, and it seems to have continued. Uh, so again, I'd like to reach out to all the families in town with prayers and thoughts going forward.
Yeah.
And let's, we can get this thing turned around, because we're kind of under a dark cloud, or snowy clouds, or whatever they may be, but.
We are.
We need a little sunshine.
Coming now. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? All right. Here's the library letter. Are they meeting with that, or are you making?
Oh, yes.
And then here's your, all your signed copy stuff for Ruby.
Are we having a meeting now, following this, Carol?
Uh, all your signs.
She has copied this.
All right. Have you signed it?
Information meeting that's.
Yeah, they have.
Reduction, and the scope is just.
So who's actually leaders?
Uh, well, it was an informational meeting. He was looking.
Oh, I.
Yes.
I was out there.
I'm so happy. I think you're happy, because I get to look at the bodies.
This conference is, it's funny, because I was thinking about this all day today.
Why? Is there a company?
You know.
Hard, but even, but here, for instance, she said, and then he mentioned her.
Yeah, no, and I don't get.
Does anybody know?
I don't think.
Anyone? That's why I was like, that's why I said.
Yeah, and getting, and getting kind of an idea of what's going on.